I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 1st, 2014 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Mrs. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence Mumgarde, Gaines Glover, Jaworski Klug, Stube Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the city council chambers. We've got a large presentation tonight, actually a very nice one. Chief Boz, and would you join me? And Jack Miller as well.
Where's Jack at?
Thank you. As you know, we've been working for the last year on a cooperative agreement with La Vista to take over their voluntary, to take over their fire department. As a reminder, the city of Papillion and the Papillion Rural Fire District got into a cooperative relationship about 11 years ago, I believe. And we've recently renewed that agreement. And the nice thing about that is it's built on a lot of trust between two government organizations. Just for the public who's watching this, we've had two different government agencies that have come together and agreed to share the bill for one operational fire department. The fire department is actually run by the city of Papillion, so they, people have one boss, but we have two parties and we have a governance structure that allows us to cooperate. La Vista struggled with a decision on how to continue to provide fire and EMS safety to La Vista, and through a number of studies, they came to the conclusion that the right answer was to move to full-time career fire. And they evaluated starting their own department, and when they started to realize the cost and they saw how our cooperative agreement was working, they made the phone call to Papillion and said, can we join your agreement? And so, we said, we're very interested in that, as long as we don't increase costs to the city of Papillion or the Papillion Rural Fire District, and as long as we don't degrade safety. And that was a benchmark all the way along. And you, as a council, and the rural fire district, and the city of La Vista, all approved agreements just prior to this last budget season that entered into this agreement. And seven o'clock this morning, the city of Papillion is now serving the city of La Vista from fire and EMS. So we actually have the swearing-in of 12 new employees that started on Monday. And I'd like maybe for, let's see, let's start with Jack Miller, as president of the rural fire district, maybe make a few comments.
Well, I want to thank you in getting this put together. And the men that are joining us, joining the department, we wish them well and be safe. And we'll move forward. We have a lot of pride in this department, and we expect it to continue.
Chief, you want to make a few comments?
I'll say mine.
Okay. I just wanted to make a couple of last comments. We had a press release this morning, and the question was asked, and I've made the statement a couple of times, in a lot of ways, people see this as a historic event, and it is historic for La Vista. But I've told people, in some ways, at least for Papillion, and I hope the rural fire district, it's just what we do, so it's almost just like another day, because we have such a level of cooperation, even little ways in parks. A mower goes down, we know why, we call our neighbor and they come over and help us. And so, whether it's parks or something larger, we have some very good cooperative structures. So to, so to do another cooperative event at this level almost just seems like what we do. So it's a, it's a good day. But behind it all is a basis of trust that we've got between the three entities. And almost all of that credit goes to administration, to the department heads, and to the city council. So I just want to thank you guys for even allowing an environment like this to exist. I don't, there's some cities that I don't think this level of cooperation could exist. So, big thanks to the city council for allowing it to happen. Ready for, you want to do the swearing-in? Make a few comments?
Yep. Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is a very special day. I've been searching all day for a proper adjective to describe it, and there really isn't anything other than special. In many different ways, it's a, it's a special day for the agreement between our rural fire district board, the city of Papillion, and the city of La Vista. To have this level of cooperation, this level of trust, really, is just outstanding, and it really is humbling for those of us in the fire department, because we are here to serve all three areas, and we're very, very excited about that. It's also very special for the 12 new firefighters that will be swearing in. We fully expect them to be employees of the city and members of the fire department for 25, 30, 35 years. They, they are entering a career field. It's, it's pretty rare in the fire service that somebody leaves. Far more people spend their entire careers in this than probably any other venture that's out there. So these young men are taking the first step forward in a long, long, hopefully healthy career with the Papillion Fire Department. Very excited for that. So with that, I would like to introduce them, have them come up, and as we talked about, stand to the, up in front of the podium. First off is Ryan Betker. Ryan Betker, we hired away from the Columbus, Nebraska Fire Department. He was a full-time firefighter, paramedic with Columbus, wanted to get back to this area, and we were fortunate enough to grab him. He was also, prior to that, a volunteer in Boys Town. He has an associate's degree in fire protection technology. Along with being a paramedic, he has a firefighter one, firefighter two certifications. Nick Kopp is one of the few without a lot of fire experience for us, which is great. You know, we love to have fresh, new minds in here. Nick worked at Petco. He has a bachelor's degree, and also EMTB and firefighter one certifications. I'm going to back up for just a second, because I forgot to mention family members. With, with Ryan, his dad Doug, and his mom Deb is here, along with his sister Caitlin. With Nick, his girlfriend Corinne, and his, their son Henry. Is, is Henry here?
Yes.
Henry is here. Very good. Okay. There's Henry. Very good. Matt Highland. Could have all kinds of fun with this one. Matt was a police officer in Seward, Nebraska, and I would like to say he saw the light and came to the right side of public safety. But knowing where our city administrator came from, I won't say that. But we are very happy to have Matt in the fire service, and I believe he is very excited to get into this branch of public safety, because policing and fire EMS are very, very different fields, and Matt's on his way to discovering that now. He'd been with Seward for five years. He has an associate's degree in criminal justice. He's a marine veteran and in the marine reserves. Thank you for your service there. He has EMTB and firefighter one certifications as well. Matt Watson. Oh, Matt doesn't have anybody with him here tonight. In fact, his, his wife is still living in Seward. They're trying to sell their house there and get up here, so. Matt Watson is, was a firefighter in Fremont, Nebraska, so we've got another full-time, former full-time firefighter with another department here in Nebraska. Matt was with Fremont for two years. He was also a paid, full-time firefighter in Colorado prior to that. He has an associate's degree in fire protection technology, EMTB and firefighter one certifications as well. His mom Suzanne is here, who just by chance runs the emergency department at the University of Nebraska Medical Center. And I remember Suzanne from my days as a paramedic in the late eighties, early nineties, delivering patients to her when she was a nurse in the emergency department. So it's neat to see Suzanne again. And his girlfriend Danny is here also. Derek Larson. Derek comes to us with a career in the air force in his past. Most recently, he's been a firefighter at Offutt Air Force Base. He has six years' experience in the fire service, and also worked some for Bellevue in their part-time system. He has an associate's degree in fire science, an EMTB certification, a lot of other military-related or military-obtained fire service certifications, which is great experience to have with us, along with the typical firefighter one and firefighter two. And his wife Lindsay is here with him, and will be pinning his badge on. Brett Desch. Brett was a customer service representative for Ducati of Omaha. How many of you know who Ducati, what a Ducati is?
Motorcycle.
Yeah, a few people. Motorcycle. All right. He has two years' experience as a volunteer firefighter in La Vista and Gretna. He has an associate's degree in fire science, and is done with his paramedic training now, and will be taking his national registry exam this month. And we're looking forward to getting him fully certified as a paramedic, and then we'll get him to work as a firefighter and a paramedic. That's very exciting for us. And he also has firefighter one and two certifications. His girlfriend Casey is here, his dad Brian, his mom Roseanne, and his stepdad Ken are also here. And it's very good to see all of them. Mike Connolly. If you, if you get a chance to talk to Mike a little bit, you'll, you'll notice an eastern accent, eastern United States accent. At one point, he met somebody and they asked him if he was from Boston. Is that right, Mike? Mike is from New York City. Mike spent 19 years with the New York City Fire Department. And you can tell by looking at Mike that he and I are about the same age, and, and Mike is not a rookie by any means. We are very, very thankful to have his experience with us, and it's very exciting to have someone with Mike with that experience with us. He's a Navy veteran. He's got all kinds of fire service certifications from his time in New York. Most recently, he was a volunteer in Glenwood, Iowa. His family ended up moving back here to help care for some aging parents. That was kind of his story. Firefighter one, firefighter two, EMTB certifications, and his wife Robyn is here with us tonight. Rob Osborne. Rob was most recently a paramedic who worked for Midwest Medical Transport, so he's going to join us in our paramedic ranks as well. He worked some part-time in Bellevue. He had five years' experience as a volunteer in Ponca Hills, so a little bit on the north side of town. He has an associate's degree in fire protection, and in addition to his paramedic certification, is a firefighter one, firefighter two. His parents, Dan, Don, and Beth are here also. Couldn't read my own writing for a second there. Cody Bodine. Cody comes from a long family history of firefighting. Most recently, he worked as a site foreman for Midland Development, was a part-time, paid firefighter in Bellevue, where he has three years' experience, and also two years' experience in La Vista. He has an associate's degree in fire science, is a Navy veteran. He has EMTB, firefighter one, firefighter two certifications. His girlfriend Annie is here, along with her parents Diane and Eric. His grandparents Bob and Rita, his dad Rick, mom Jean, sister Kylie, and her boy, brother-in-law, his brother-in-law Ben, is that right? Okay. Pretty close to that. Just to give you a little bit of the family history, his grandfather Bob Bodine was a battalion chief in Omaha who was in charge of their training facility for a long time. And I've known Bob for years and years, and when I first met Cody, the name Bodine is just unusual enough, I thought, yeah, I wonder if there's a relation. I asked Cody, and sure enough, his grandfather was Bob. So it was neat, really neat to make that connection again. Marty Price. Marty was an operations manager at West Corporation. He has three years' experience with the La Vista Volunteer Fire Department. Has an associate's degree in business management, is an EMTB and firefighter one. His wife Jennifer is here, along with his daughters Allison and Elaine. Very good. Ryan Bailey. Ryan is an EMTB who was most recently working for Rural Metro Ambulance. He had prior, previously been a full-time firefighter in Atchison, Kansas, before moving back to this area. And then he was, he tested for us, and we were fortunate enough to get him. He has past experience with La Vista. He's a professional college student. He's got about four and a half years of college and no degree to show for it yet, so. We're going to, we're going to nudge him in that direction to keep taking those college courses. His wife Morgan is here, as well as his dad Brad and his mom Carrie. And Zach Laurison. Zach, most recently, worked as a patient care clerk tech at the University of Nebraska Medical Center. He has an EMTB firefighter one, firefighter two certifications as an air force veteran. And his girlfriend Alicia is here with us. So this is our group of 12 firefighters that we're very happy to have.
I'd like to ask the rural fire board maybe to come up. We've got the council up here, and have the rural fire board come up as we, as I swear in. And just for those who may not know, in addition to Jack, who is the president, Jim Kerfoot, Milt Fricki, Don Roberts, I don't think Steve Zedeen is here, unless he just came, and the administrator Kevin Edwards. And so, this is the rural fire district who the city of Papillion is in partnership with. I want to raise your hand. I state that I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, that I support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of the United States. I install enemies. I warrant domestic. That I bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. That I take this obligation freely. And without mental reservation. Or for the purpose of evasion. And that I will faithfully and impartially. Perform the duties of the office of firefighter. According to law. In the best of my ability. And I do further swear. That I do not advocate. Or am I a member of. A political party or organization. That advocates the overthrow. Of the government of the United States. Or of this state. By force of violence. And then during such time. As I am in this position. I will not advocate. Nor become a member. Of any political party. Or organization. That advocates the overthrow. Of the government of the United States. Of this state. By force of violence. So help me God. I think there might be some family members that actually want to pin those on, so we want to go ahead and invite them up. And if they want to take pictures, that's fine, too. Do you want to make any final comments?
No, were you going to tell them we're going to run up to La Vista?
As they're doing that, I just want to let folks know that they are also, they're going to run right out of this. They're going to, the La Vista City Council's actually meeting right now, and since they're a key party to this agreement, they're going to get up to their council, out to their council meeting, so they can be introduced up there as well. Again, thank you.
Work your way up, yeah, you're good. Thanks for coming. Push your way up there, that's good.
And new firemen don't leave yet. We've got one more thing that we've got to do. As soon as they clear out, I'll direct them.
That's where we were married.
What are you?
Yeah. So Norman Wilmer, my wife was. Norm passed away about two years ago.
Mom told me that you were the mayor.
So what's your name?
Brad Bailey.
Okay. I know the Bailey name.
Yeah, Roger Dunne.
Yeah. All right.
And my grandma Thelma, she just died.
Okay.
Your wife's not here, is she?
No, she's not. That's cool.
I was looking to see my name recognized.
So who's your relation here? Okay. Ah, cool. Cool.
Oh, that's all right. I haven't seen you in this long time.
Those are, the ones that are here are top of the top. We've got a lot of competition for them. Pretty high standard. So we're going to get through. So do you still live in Waverly or Lincoln? Do you still live in Waverly or Lincoln then?
Lincoln.
Okay.
They live in Montrose, Montrose.
Okay. Okay. Cool. Yeah, so I'm married to Renee. Yep. Appreciate it. Good to meet you. Absolutely. Okay. Here's yours.
Congratulations again, and as I mentioned, they're headed out to the La Vista City Council meeting, so they can be introduced there. Mr. Hoynes, administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I begin my report this evening by advising you of several very important projects we have in progress and in process. Advise you some things, most importantly, that will be pending before you in the very near future, certainly to give you an opportunity to come ask staff questions as we can. The first one, you're pretty familiar with. 911 is grinding its way to you for a decision. I think from a very, from a 30,000-foot level, I will tell you that it appears that there's going to be, at least initially, a virtual merger of the 911 systems. When I say virtual, that is a decision that's made by the Sarpy County Board, and they've actioned their last resolution, or going that direction. However, what it means to the city of Papillion is that you will have, as a city council, before you on April 15th, the four separate agenda items, and they all surround the creation of a separate entity and a governing board for the Sarpy County portion of 911. What that does for us is it gives each mayor a seat at a governing board to, to vote and provide input on the operations of the 911 center. So there will be four, four documents, an inter-local and some attendant agreements that will be before you, and I do have them in draft form, and I think substantively what they will look like. So if you have any concerns, questions, directions about where 911 is going in the, in the next couple of weeks from a city of Papillion, Sarpy City Municipality, or a Douglas, Sarpy County, please give me a call, and we'd be glad to fill in any blanks, because again, you will be asked to cast a vote on that matter in two weeks, so that's very, very important. Obviously, a couple of things, you know, today was the official merger, as we've just, just saw here with the swearing-in. I'd just like to point out, Mayor Black alluded to it, that we've had this merger with the rural fire district, and by bringing in the city of La Vista, it really is, and Mayor Black and I talk frequently about it, the way that government should work, at the end of the day, we are increasing public safety at a lower cost to everyone. And a substantial lower cost to some, but, and that is absent even the $2 million grant. I did try to contact you, that was awarded, if you didn't already get that. That's, that's a substantial offset over the first three years, but even absent the grant, there, there's literally millions of dollars of savings between those three entities during the first six years, and we did our projections on that. And so, I just wish there was a better way we could get our story out as three governments in doing that, because certainly, we work towards that often, but very seldom do you get to the point where we're at tonight, where it really did happen, and all the pieces fell into place, and it worked very well. And I think Chief Boz is begging out here, and there's, I want to call attention to Deputy Chief Jones. He sits there quietly, and there, Mayor Black and I met with the new firefighters the first day they were on duty, and I explained to them my role is similar to a Dr. Rickley series. Even welcome, Dr. Rickley, as a superintendent of schools, because maybe they didn't understand government, and that the department heads were building principals. And when I walked out, Deputy Chief Jones says, well, if they're, if they're principals, what am I, a hall monitor? He's the guy that makes things go down there. And so Jeff, certainly appreciate, he and Chief Boz have just, just done yeoman's work to get this thing where it's at, and actually to get that flag raised up and deliver that service. So, two other very quick things. One, four weeks ago, actually, you approved, as a council, an author, authorization for the city of Papillion in cooperation with three other cities, Hastings, La Vista, and Holdridge, to hire a broker to take our, our property and casualty and workers' comp insurance out to bid. As you well know, we're currently with alarm. That expires on October 1. We have received all of the proposals. I think we see five or six, Chris? Six proposals. We'll be reviewing those in the month of May. We will get up to you a, a recommendation to hire a broker who will then take our insurance out onto the market, do a comparative analysis, and make sure that we're getting the best deal, and eventually, probably by June or July, make a recommendation for where we should go with our property casualty workers' comp insurance for this city in that direction. Finally, item, agenda item E1, South Brook Preliminary Plan. Now, you're not going to discuss that tonight, and hopefully you took some time to look at it. That's, that's a very, very important development to the city of Papillion, Sarpy County, quite frankly, not even sure, I haven't had a chance to share with Dr. Rickley and his staff. That is a development, and you'll just introduce it tonight, and there won't be much discussion, but I want to put it out there, both of the council and the public, that, well, has identified staff- that, well, has identified, staff has identified, a funding source for the paving of 108th Street South to Shram Road, and then paving of Shram Road back to the east. So, we'll make that connection with that development. There's a substantial investment from the city. We're adjacent to a lot of that, but we're computing that in the one and six-year road plan, the upcoming budgets. Sarpy County stepped up plate and did, went above and beyond what they normally do. The developers certainly went above and beyond what they did, realizing the uniqueness of that tract of land. And so, if all goes well on that particular project, certainly by next year at this time, we'll have plans and be well on the way to getting that problem resolved. A lot of credit goes to Jeff Thompson, city engineer, Chris Myers, Nancy. I often sit in the room and say, "This can't go without this," and they come back up with a solution. And so, that's the way the sausage gets made in city government, and those people need that. But again, I'm telling you that, because you'll be having a public hearing in two weeks on this, and then be asked to approve it in four weeks. So, very, very important development in that aspect. So, we'll free up any time we need to answer your questions on that. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Mr. Mungard.
Mayor, I'd like to remove item C6 from the consent agenda, please.
C6 is polled. Mr. Ingberg.
I was going to ask for C6 also, but I would also like C4 up polled as well.
C4 and 6 are polled, which only leaves item C5. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion on C5? Please vote.
Seven yes, zero noes.
Motion passes. Next is item C4, Resolution R140040. A resolution to approve an operational response of automatic aid agreement between the Papillion Fire Department and the Ralston Volunteer Fire Department, and authorize the fire chief to sign the agreement. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R140040? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to touch base with Deputy Chief Jones. Just a quick question. Am I correct in assuming the reason there is an expiration date with this mutual aid agreement is for purposes primarily going back a year from now and evaluating how many calls of service we've had by Ralston, and what impact it may have on our fire service?
Yes, it'll give us a chance to review GIS mapping, to see what the actual call volume is, and if we need to tweak it, we can do it at that time.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yes, zero noes.
Motion passes. Next is item C6, Resolution R140046. A resolution to approve an operational response of automatic aid agreement between the Papillion Fire Department and the Omaha Fire Department, and authorize the fire chief to sign the agreement. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R140046? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilwoman Klug. Any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Mungard.
Yes, my employment with the city of Omaha requires me to abstain from this, so I'll do so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
The other question I had is similar to Deputy Chief. Is this mutual aid agreement with Omaha left open-ended basically because of the, it's more complicated than what with Ralston, and we have to have a little more space to make adjustments as we go through it?
That's correct. It's a larger area. The response types that we're going to provide to each other are different, and it is more complicated. But any major changes to the agreement would require approval of council.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Six yes, zero noes. Mungard abstains.
Motion passes. Next is item E1. Ordinance 1690, an ordinance to approve the change of zone of certain real property within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, legally described as part of the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 32, Township 14, North Range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of 108th Street and Shram from agricultural AG to single-family residential medium-density R2, to amend the official zoning map of the city of Papillion by changing the zoning district boundaries of the zoning map in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code, and to provide for an effective date. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Mr. Jobin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Boyer Young Development. With me tonight is Tim Young and Mark Boyer of Boyer Young Development, as well as Mark Westergaard of VNA Consulting Group, which is the consulting engineers on this particular project. Tonight, what's before you is the public hearing on the rezoning, of course, and then also the preliminary plat, which is a public hearing and vote, which is later on the agenda. But I think what I would do now is just kind of go through the whole development and talk about really everything as one project with respect to the rezoning and the preliminary plat. And then I guess we'll answer any questions that you might have regarding those. With respect to the existing conditions, this is currently about a 74-acre parcel. It's relatively undeveloped surrounding the parcel. That's both true to the north, the west, and the south. With respect to the east, you do have the fire station, the Sumter Amphitheater, and Walnut Grove recreational area. So, just to get your bearing straight, this is 108th Street, Shram Road, and then, of course, west, north, east, south. The subject property is currently zoned ag. And of course, we're seeking approval later with the final plat to rezone this to R2, medium-density residential. Currently, there's 192 proposed single-family lots. This actually, under your comp plan, is low-density, because it's between one and four residential lots per acre. And we actually are at about 2.81 units or lots per acre. There are five outlots. They're primarily for storm sewer and drainage areas. They're to be maintained by the SID and eventually by the city. That'll be covered in the subdivision agreement. The proposed project, of course, is consistent with the comprehensive development plan. And as far as amenities, there is a trail that will be extended through Outlet A at this location here, and will connect to the Walnut Creek recreational area. As far as the access points, we do have the access points that are adjacent or aligned with the Sumter Amphitheater, as well as the fire station to the east. 108th Street will be paved to Shram Road for the entire length of the development. The paving currently ends at the north boundary of the proposed subdivision. And of course, Shram Road will be improved from the western boundary of the property to 108th, and then from 108th to Turkey Road. And we'll get into that a little bit further here, because I think it's important with the approval of this preliminary plat, Boyer Young intends to close on this property and move forward. So, I think it's important that the council understand what we're thinking the sharing arrangement is. And we've been working diligently with staff, and we appreciate their involvement and their help throughout the process as far as how this cost allocation will work. And we've been working with the county, of course, as well. But 108th Street is estimated to be about $832,000. Currently, the cost participation is one-third the city, one-third the county, and one-third the SID. And of course, that's from the northern boundary down to Shram Road. And then we have Shram Road west of 108th Street, from this particular location west to the boundary of the subdivision. And that is one-half the county, one-half the SID, what's being proposed. And that cost is estimated to be about $378,000. But as Mr. Hoynes was discussing earlier in his administrative report, the key here is making sure that Shram Road is improved all the way to Turkey Road. And I think that's a substantial improvement that the city wants to see, as well as the county. And so, that's been well-received. The total estimated cost between 108th and Shram Road is about $1 million. And what's being proposed right now is the county is going to pick up about 50% of that. And this is a two-lane road section for now, but it will be able to be expanded in the future to provide for future development and future expansion of the street systems. The city, their shares on a proportionate basis, it's about 12.4%. And this is on a front-footage basis with the amphitheater to the east side of 108th Street. And then, the SID is really capped at about $208,000, and that goes to the 4% debt-to-value ratio. And so, that really puts us at our cap there, so we can't really contribute anymore. But the great thing about this is the county was willing to pick up that gap, which is about $250,000. And that gap will then be reimbursed through the future development of the Shram parcel, which is east of 108th and north of Shram, as well as the White Hamilton parcel when it's developed to the south. So, that's sort of the general overview of the cost participation, what's going to be done. The off-site public improvements really are the key to this project moving forward. So, we wanted the council to understand that, because Boyer Young is going to close on this and move forward with grading based upon their timing and what they want to see with respect to the lot sales. We appreciate the recommendation of the planning department and find that acceptable in every way. And we appreciate, again, the involvement of Public Works and planning and the county, of course, in working through these issues regarding the off-site public improvements. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public hearing's still open. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Do we have a representative from Dingman's with us for one of the agenda items? Okay, if they were, I was going to move an item up on the agenda so they didn't have to wait. So, we'll just stay with the regular order. Item F1, Resolution R140036. The next three items are all related to the items that were tabled from the last city council meeting. Item F1, Resolution R140036. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as part of the south half of Section 28, and also part of the southeast quarter of Section 29, all located in Township 14, North Range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and generally located on the northeast corner of 108th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is BHI Development. As a reminder, at the last council meeting, we held the public hearing. We had proponents, opponents. We closed the public hearing. We had the motion and the second, so now we're at council discussion. And that's where we left off when the item was tabled, so that's where we'll pick up again. So, we are at council discussion. Councilman Jaworski.
Thank you. I want to, there's a perception out there that I'm against apartments. That's the farthest from the truth, because the last four or five apartment buildings that we had come before us, I was part of approving those. What I am against is overbuilding and building in the wrong spots. I did my homework over the weekend. I called all the apartments that are in Papillion, and there's only one that's, three of them didn't call me back. One's full, and there's probably close to 300 available apartments right now. That's not counting Shadow Lake, that's going to build 150 more. That's not Schwer Farms, that's going to build 270 to 300. Bellino 96, two to 300. So, there's going to be close to 800, 900 apartments available. Again, is there a need for this, or is this a want? And one of the things that I struggle with up here is, it's not what we do here now. And I've said this 100 times. It's not what we do up here right now. It's what are we going to leave? Our families, our people 20 years down the line. How's this place going to look? Is it going to look as good as it is now? Or what are we doing here? So, I'm leaning towards still a no, but I'm going to listen to all my other colleagues and see what they say. And I'm not going to be the only no vote. But if I still have a little bit of support, I honestly believe we're overbuilding. And that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Mungard.
Well, I was absent for the public hearing, so I didn't get to participate in the discussion, such as Mr. Jaworski's just referenced. And I did read the minutes and talked to many of the council members and staff members, and I read all the emails that came in. Clearly, as Mr. Jaworski's pointed out, the biggest issue here is the proposed apartments. So, I guess I'd like to just take this opportunity to talk a little bit with the developer, because I guess I still have a few questions that I'd like to have answered. So, is Mr. Torson here? Would you come forward and answer some questions for me?
And he's coming up. I just want to make a quick comment. There was a petition that some residents sent in that was received. And I just want to let them know that will be made part of the minutes, and all the council members do have that. Can you state your name for the record?
Jerry Torson, BHI Development, 11205, South 150th Street.
Okay, Mr. Torson. I guess I have two questions, because, and they're both why questions. And because, as Mr. Jaworski pointed out, at times, we hear questions about how many apartments are enough or too many. And then we also talk about location of apartments. And, you know, and I've voted for several apartment complexes that have been proposed over the years. And certainly, I can understand, I accept the idea that there can be bad apartments. And I accept the idea that apartments can be in the wrong spot. I struggle with what Mr. Jaworski pointed out with, well, how many apartments is too many? How many is not enough? I know, I'll be a little cynical here for a moment, Mr. Jaworski. And I'll note that just about six weeks ago, we had a large apartment complex proposal come before us on Cornuska Road, and that was approved unanimously. And I didn't hear anybody question at that point whether we were getting out of balance for apartments. So, I'm not, I'm going to put the out-of-balance question aside. I guess two questions for you. Okay, why are you proposing to put apartments into this development? We seem to be seeing that as a fairly regular course in developments. And you, as a developer, you've been around a long time, built a lot of houses. Why are you proposing to put apartments in this development? And then, secondly, why in this particular spot?
Well, I think I need to step back and do a little overview. We developed the Kingsbury subdivision for Hartstone Homes back in the early 2000s. When they went out of business, we took it back, or we were the developers. So, we developed a product, a brand name called Richland Homes, and we started filling in the subdivision. It's gone very well. In looking at how well it went, we started looking for additional ground to keep the momentum going. We purchased the farm to the east. And at that time, we were in discussions with Papillion Schools on the North Shore School. And it came to my attention that they were looking for a school site. So, in meeting with them, we proposed, if they would like, they could have the middle school site on this 80 acres right here. And during that time, we had a surprise during the planning process that there's a gas line that runs right here, almost across the site, which really limited what we can do on this site. It really put the school in the only location it could go to. In our research, and I've provided articles from the National Home Builders, and I'm happy to be president of one of the local home building groups, and apartments are in demand, and the National Home Builders are predicting that home building, or apartments, will be increased by 20% nationwide. Why is that? Well, the market's changed. In 2006, '07, I believe, Hartstone Celebrity built 2,000 homes out of 55 homes built in the metropolitan area. This last year, Celebrity built 471. The kids that are getting out of college have high debt. The average, it was just in the Wall Street Journal, the average college debt for college students in the medical field giving out is $146,000. Lawyers, whereas, was $110,000, and then the average was about $40,000 to $50,000 in college debt. I have discussed this site with Bert Hancock, who is doing the Shadow Lake Apartments. You know, when we looked at our success at Shadow Lake, Shadow Lake had an apartment component, a school component, single-family component, and trails. And we were very successful there. I mean, we closed over 80 lots every year. I mean, we closed over 80 lots every year through the recession. So obviously, what worked there can work here. So in working with the engineers, those were my marching orders. We want a lot of trails, we want the connections to the commercial. This commercial site here has been through the Papillion Planning Department. They'll, we're working with issues with the State Department of Roads, and then this will be coming to you. And when we were stuck with this little piece of ground right here, bounded, bounded by 370, 108th, and the gas line, it really, really became difficult to do anything but apartments or office building or retail. Now, my belief is, there's probably too much retail. The retail sector is easily handled, handled right here. You know, market for office? I have a sister-in-law and two nieces that are in the mortgage business, they work from home. The internet has changed everything. Last quarter, at Walmart, it was in the Wall Street Journal, too, obviously you can tell I read the Wall Street Journal, Walmart large box sales were down 2%. Their neighborhood stores were up 6%. Their internet sales were up 30%. So that's all happened since the recession or in the last 10 years. There's just more people working from home. The, the tenant mix, like Exarban Village, and Midtown, and Shadow Lake are professional, college kids that have graduated, that have college debt. The old days of buying a house, you, you're always told, why, why rent? You can buy a house. Well, now you gotta put money down with a Todd Frank. So the, there was just an article, I think I forwarded to Mr. Sturzma, where the entry-level housing is gonna be down probably for the next 10 years. The, the apartments over in, in Shadow Lake, we haven't had any issues. They're, they're nice apartments. We want nice apartments. We intend to own this commercial for a very long time, so I have a stake of what goes on this lot. And I made a verbal commitment to the school district that I would provide the infrastructure on this here. And we can't make that work with just single-family. The SID just doesn't work. The additional lots that we're adding here are probably gonna be priced 20 to 30,000 higher than the ones that are in Kingsbury, just because of inflation, cost of things going up. And we feel they act like a buffer. If this connection gets built to serve the middle school, we have acquired the right to this 80 acres to the north of Kingsbury. We've had a preliminary discussion with Mr. Sturzma. We would be installing Lincoln Road. The circle points right here would be connections to the existing Kingsbury. So now they would have three exits to the north. They can go north on 114th. They can come down, come to 108th, and hit the lighted traffic signal on 108th. 114th will probably be warranted for a traffic light once this is developed. But everything I'm reading is, the apartment market has changed, it's gonna be stronger, and the tenant mix is different. I don't think you're gonna see any more $300 rents. I talked to Bert just the other day at Shadow Lake, his cheapest unit is 680 bucks for 600-some square feet. Everything above that, all the other units are seven, and his highest price is 1,380 bucks. That's equivalent to a house payment. So, and that's, and he's doing very well over there. He's happy. So I just think that this is a good mix. We were looking, this down, this section down here in input from staff, we are, we are looking at, nah, this is kinda, it's not very, we're looking like, we're looking for a pedestrian-friendly plaza space here, and we would want a pedestrian-friendly trails, all the trails that are located, all the red lines are trails here. We're hoping to connect to the, the Kingsbury Trail, which we hope someday will continue north to the Photon Project, and connect this lake, there's another lake to the west, and then the lake that's being built right now around North Shore. And we're hoping to even get a crossing underneath 120th at 370 to tie in our Ashberry Creek and Ashberry Farms. We're real big in the trails, 'cause that came back on a little survey study we did in Shadow Lake. Everybody liked the trails, and they love the, the point that they can come home from work, and they don't have to get in a car. They can walk down to these services and never get in a car.
Mr. Mungard, did that answer your question?
Well, yeah, but you've kind of perplexed me about something you said. You were saying that it's projected that entry-level housing will be down in the com, for quite a number of years.
In the proportion of building permits issued.
Okay. Well, I, yeah, I was hearing a commentary just yesterday, I think, along the same lines, that overall, this is nation, nationally, housing, I'd say, housing, building, and purchases are down and projected to stay down, in part because of lending, more difficulty in getting loans for houses, and higher prices because of building materials and other things going up. Okay. We went through a period of several years when we didn't see anybody, you or anybody else, coming in and asking for permission to build houses. But now we're sitting here, and you're looking, showing us hundreds of houses that you wanna put in in the coming years. We just heard about Southbrook with, with another 100 and some. I sit here, and I think, well, those are two different messages. I'm not sure, when you're telling me that, that entry-level housing is down, but yet we're seeing all this burst of housing, how does that fit together?
Well, because the entry level, I'm saying that 175 and below, there's just more of those people are renting to pay down debt. Our Pinecrest line, our Woodland line, we're busy. We're, we're swamped. We don't have enough lots. And, you know, there's, there's, and, and Mark and Tim would agree that during the recession, we've absorbed so many lots, there's a shortage of lots.
Okay. Thank you.
What are the practices in the launch, you said, the Woodland?
The Pinecrest, I would say, starts at 250 to 3. Woodland is 3 to 4, and Birchwood, I own Birchwood, is 5 and 1.
Mr. Ringberg.
Well, when we had the public hearing, I think everyone was quite clear that I had a few concerns about the development. Actually, the three main concerns I had, touched a little bit on what Calzum Mungard said, but one was the location of the apartments relative to the existing single-family homes. The second one was a review and study of the traffic study that was, was completed for the area. And also, as Mr. Jaworski said, this council had some concern for a period of time about the ratio of single-family homes to multifamily apartments and so forth. I will tell you that since the public hearing, there's a few things that, at least in my mind, resolve some of these concerns for me. First of all, you know, a map is all well and good, but I think you have to go out and actually look at an area to get a real feel for what the development will look like. And I will tell you that when I went out there and looked at it again, when you, when you look at where the multifamily is going to be, it appears to me the closest existing house is a quarter of a mile away. And in between that, there's a, there's a gully that runs through the property, and a tree line. So in my mind, I don't see a direct impact to the existing homeowners, at least from that respect. I also believe, after all these years on the council, is studying planning a little bit, that I've always been told that apartments are a excellent buffer along highways, and they're a good buffer for any residential sitting back of the highways. So it makes sense where it sits. The other thing, the, the second concern, the traffic, as I sat and looked at the traffic study again, and I was able to sit down with Mr. Sturzma for a period of time, to review not only what this development has in it, but what future development holds in the area, the way the traffic patterns look like they're going to develop, I think that the traffic situation and, and the way it's going to develop will be completely appropriate for what, what needs to be done for the development. The last thing that we've all had some concern about is the ratio. We've always kind of, I hate to admit this, as good as planners as we all are, and I think it's an excellent job we've done over the years of maintaining this community to a standard, one thing we've always had difficulty with, is, struggled with is, how many multifamily is too many? How many is too little? We went through a period of time where we built very little multifamily in this community. The Gold Coast Apartments, the Hogans Apartments, and so forth. And then we went a period of time without any. Now we're starting to see more, and I don't disagree with you at all, I think there's a reason for that. I think demographics are changing a little bit, and I think the ability to get into a home is different now than it was 20 years ago. And since the public hearing, the city went out and did some study to compare the ratio of what our house, that single-family housing is, as opposed to multifamily. And compared that number with the other 10 cities of like size, that were the top 10 of the CNN Money Magazine list, of which we are the top 10, and we seem to fall about in the middle. I'm not saying that those numbers, that top 10, have some magic quality, but I certainly would think they, they are reasonable enough to believe that if we fall in the middle of that, including this development, if that, if that was included in it, we would still be where I think we ought to be with, with apartments. That was a real convincer for me. And I'm sure this council, in the upcoming weeks, and when we do our retreat, that's one of the things that we were, we, I'm sure we'll get to, is some target that we want to aim for, as far as our ratio is concerned, that lets a developer know that they can't just come in and just dump an apartment someplace, and we're gonna say yes or no, just be, just because. They'll have a feel for, is there a market there? And honestly, Mr. Torzen or anyone else that develops, as I think I told a few of the homeowners last time, he's, he's not here tonight because he wants to help people have a place to live. That's true, you do. But he's also a businessman. And we may have vacant apartments right now, and all differs to Mr. Jaworski, I don't know that you're gonna build those tomorrow. You may wait for five years until the market adjusts a little bit more. All you're asking for is the ability to build them if you choose to. And, and I think that we ought to, because all things being equal, with those concerns that I had being addressed, I think that we certainly should, should approve his opportunity to build there if he chooses, and with his track record, I'm pretty comfortable with it.
Councilman Kluk.
Thank you. I also took the opportunity with the extra two weeks to go out and do a lot of driving out near that neighborhood. Got a lot of dust on my vehicles when I was going up and down the county roads and that. And it's all good, because it was good to go and drive it and that. But as I look at this plan, I notice you do have an extreme amount of walking trails going through the business area, and you've got, you know, the walking trail growing through the houses and the outlot and that. I would like to challenge you just a little bit in the apartment area. There's not a walking trail in it, around it, or near it. I realize there's sidewalks, but you don't have any of the red dots that indicate it, except for right along the street. So just a comment, is that, to me, if you're going to put people in apartments with that, consider putting a nice walking trail through the middle of their location, too, to make it a little bit easier for them to go through. Just a consideration, I think that as we see the people coming out of the colleges and that, they do have a different way of looking at things, simply because they're the youth, they do have the debt you've talked about, and they are looking for many of those amenities. You know, they want a fun place to live. So I'm not saying that it's wrong, I'm just challenging you to relook at it.
I think that sidewalk is all, they're all the same width. We intend to landscape that with trees, and they, they're all the same width. So the trails will be consistent throughout.
So those sidewalks are gonna be incredibly great inside those apartment areas?
Wider, and, I don't know about incredibly great, would you know? But no, we, we intend that, you know, for a walkable sidewalk, you need to move it off the street and put a buffer of landscaping and trees, and make it not feel like you're walking on the street. I, I've discussed that with Mr. Sturzma, and I'm in, I don't have a problem with that. And it's my understanding that this site is being zoned MU with the ability to do apartments. If somebody came in tomorrow and wanted to put a first-class office building there, I'd come back to staff and city and say, I'm wrong, let's put an office park there. I just don't think that's happening. I'm just being realistic. With, with, with the, with the office potential at Photon, and some of the stuff overlooking on the west side of the lake and stuff, and, you know, just the change with the internet, how many people are working from their homes? You know, I was visiting with the president of the local bank, and he made a comment that just floored me. He said, he doesn't know if he'll ever build another bank. And I said, what do you mean? He says, we don't need to, we can do everything over the internet.
So let's talk about that comment that you just made for a second, then. Just as another idea that I read about in different magazines and on the internet, as you refer to, where I go to for some of my information, it seems like there's a few locations that are being highly successful with having apartments on Second, Third, Fourth, moving on up, and having some small office buildings and that on the first floor.
Live-work units.
Yeah. You know, I think that's something we also need to be looking at. Again, you go back to your statement about the people who will be coming into these apartments and that, have gotten used to that. Maybe if they've been living on college campuses or whatever, they're used to having those amenities on the first floor to keep it close. I hope that we keep our options completely open for that.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. So one of my biggest concerns last time was traffic. I was concerned with what a lot of the neighbors were saying, as far as they were concerned about the amount of traffic going through the areas, whether it would work. The more I looked at this, the more I realized there were some curves built into it to somewhat help control traffic flow, to help slow it down. I also spent a lot of time thinking about Highway 370, and that concern of how much traffic's going to be going out on 108th, when we're putting all of our new drivers into the school system there. I think we've done a lot working with that, and the more I evaluated it, and I asked some questions of the city, excuse me, of the school, some of their people, as far as how long is it really crowded there, it's not that amount of time. It's not like it's an all-day congestion problem. It's not like we're gonna have to dedicate an officer up there to get people in and out from 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning. It's just not that long of a time. And I just feel like people who move into the apartment buildings, they're gonna know that school's sitting there, they're going to know the issue. They're either gonna be working from their apartments, or they're gonna leave a little earlier or a little later to potentially stay away from those younger, newer drivers that might be having difficulties. So ultimately, while I did have many concerns with this, as I've investigated it further in that, I truly feel that if we monitor what's going on, we pay attention to the trends, and we try to lead what's going on, we will have a successful opportunity on 370 with your project. But Mark, I guess to you directly, I do want to make sure we continue to lead things as far as what we're doing with the trends. Can we put some of our businesses under apartments? And just watch some of those. I don't want to be following everybody else, I want us to be looking to the future and be that place where these young people are wanting to come to help keep our city vibrant with progressive thoughts and lifestyles. That's what I'd appreciate.
That all sounds great to me. And I'll just, I guess that my comment would be that because this is mixed-use zoning, before anything can get built there, there will have to be a mixed-use agreement that the developer brings back to city council for approval. So you will have final say in, in how that area gets developed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Please vote. Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F2, Resolution R14-0037. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as being a replat of lots 202 through 209, Outlet D, Kingsbury Hills, and also lots 1 through 28, Kingsbury Hills replat 1, part of the right-of-way of Sherman Street, 108th Street, 109th Street, Cimron Street, Laramie Street, all located in the southeast quarter of Section 29, and also together with part of the southwest quarter of Section 28, all located in Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of 108th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is BHI Development. Again, this item was tabled from the last council meeting, we had the public hearing, public hearing was closed, we had called for the motion in the second, so we were at council discussion, and that's where we pick up. Do we have a motion? No, I don't think we had taken the motion. We need the motion. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R14-0037? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilwoman Klug. Council discussion. Mr. Mumgarth.
I guess I have a question for staff. I note that in the cover letter for this, the staff report for this one, there's four, approval should be contingent upon four items. And I think that was also in the prior one. Do we need to make these approvals contingent, or is it just okay to do?
Staff, the staff reports are incorporated into the motion, so the contingency will be there.
Okay, that's fine with me, thank you.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F3, Resolution R14-0038. A resolution to approve a special use permit to allow for secondary educational facilities as a permitted use for the property legally described as part of the southwest quarter, Section 28, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, to be platted as Lot 25, Granite Falls, generally located on the southeast corner of 108th Street and Lincoln. The applicant is the Papillion-Lavista Schools. Again, this item was also tabled, the public hearing was held, public hearing was closed, and we're now at the motion to approve Resolution R14-0038. Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Ingberg. Council discussion? Ms. Klug.
Yeah, I was wondering if I could just ask a couple of questions to maybe a representative from the school district?
Mr. Rickley, or whoever you want to delegate to?
Absolutely. For the record, my name is Andrew Rickley, last name is R.I.K.L.I., address is 12710 South 81st Avenue, 68046, Superintendent of Schools, Papillion-Lavista School District.
Wow, catch your breath after that, huh? Well, excellent. You know, I've just heard some different discussions and comments, whether it was here or at Planning Commission meetings and that, and I just wanted to have an opportunity to discuss those with you.
Absolutely.
One of the concerns that we heard from citizens is, and this is a little bit back to the apartments that we know are a go, does the school district actually have concerns with bringing in apartments and the number of kids that it's bringing to you, realizing the concerns Mr. Jaworski's commented on?
Absolutely, thank you, Councilwoman. It's certainly one of the things that we're always looking at as a school district. We've experienced rather rapid growth the last number of years. This last school year, we added over 400 students, previous year, we added over 300 students. So, keeping in mind that growth will always be a challenge for us, it's certainly a conversation that we've had. But to answer the question directly, as Councilman Jaworski pointed out, we have apartment complexes all over this great district of ours, and that's certainly something that we plan for as we're doing our enrollment projections. So, by adding these units potentially at 108th Street, it will be certainly something we'll factor in, but it will in no way change our planning for the junior high, which will open in 2016.
Okay, good, good. I'm glad that it's being part of the discussion, because I know when we're fortunate enough to have developers come forward, it can be like, whoa, what's happening here sometimes? Very good. And another comment that we heard the citizens make was in regard to the traffic. If we've got the schoolagers going and driving to the high school, events going to the high school, and events happening at the junior high, any, do you have any traffic concerns going on the 108th and the way it's curved going past your junior high students?
Again, it's certainly something that we want to be mindful of as a school district, since we will have a number of buildings in a relatively concentrated area, new elementary, new junior high, obviously Papillion-Lavista South High School. But it certainly won't be the only building that we will have in a high-traffic area. I would use as an example, G. Stanley Hall, which is one of our very oldest elementary buildings, which sits right on a major thoroughfare on the east side of 72nd Street. I would use Lavista Junior High, which sits on South Washington, 84th Street. So, again, it will certainly be something that we're mindful of, and any assistance that the city might have to help with some of those traffic flow and congestion issues, we would be very open to. But again, it's a conversation we've had, and it's something we're very confident that we can deal with.
Okay, very good. You know, really, those were my concerns, as I like to, you know, when the citizens address things to us, I do believe we have an obligation to speak directly to you and get the facts presented, so we all are on the same page as we move forward and make decisions. So, thanks for being here tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, absolutely, thank you, Councilwoman.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Glover.
I have a quick question about Lincoln Street, and I think Jerry alluded to the possibility if they go across to the other subdivision, that there may be some movement on that. But what's going to happen with Lincoln Street if there's no development on the other side? And as we all know, if you've driven out there, it is a gravel road and could present some problems. Is that in our five, six-year road plan at all?
It's going to be, if it follows our normal pattern and our normal policy and philosophy, it's going to be development-driven, so as development contiguous to road, as a development contiguous to a road develops, they participate in that funding, and that's an important component from the developer helping pay for it between the developer city and county. So, if we follow our normal process, Lincoln will develop as the plats develop. If to do anything different and accelerate it for other reasons would change our philosophy a little bit.
I guess in particular, I was wondering if we've had any discussion with the county on a share
Mr. Sturzma.
Of that road stretch.
Well, to date, we have not had any discussions about improving that road without the assistance of private development. I guess I would say that the county has, in recent years, looked at doing some development or some road improvements, kind of strategically, prior to private development happening. One example would be the 114th Street corridor, obviously, with the Fidelity Project, that was an important corridor, the county recognized the need, and they did some improvements in addition to being adjacent to that development. They're also planning on improving Lincoln Road West of 114th Street to fill that current gap. So, I guess there are examples where the county has stepped up and made some road improvements for a regional safety, traffic flow basis, in anticipation of new development. But to specifically answer your question, there hasn't been a discussion about doing that on Lincoln Road east of this development to date, but, you know, time will tell.
And to your knowledge, the county hasn't said anything about putting that in their five-year road plan, or?
I have not seen that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F4, Resolution R14-0043. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 32, Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of 108th Street and Shram. The applicant is Southbrook Development LLC. I'll open the public hearing. Do you have proponents?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing with the applicant, as well as Mark Listergard of VNA Consulting Group, simply here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the preliminary plat.
Yeah, why don't you have any apartments there?
You know, I tried that here.
Well, we just heard that economically, the other guy needed to have apartments, and you don't. What's the deal?
Do you have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion to approve Resolution R14-0043? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilwoman Klug. Any council discussion? Any more council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F5, Resolution R14-0044. A resolution to approve the agreement to lease public right-of-way to Dingman's Collision Center for a six-foot strip of South Jefferson Street, adjacent to Lot 3, Block 5, South Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, in order to build, locate, and operate a trash enclosure. Do you have a motion to approve Resolution R14-0044? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is committee reports, and I don't think any have met. Nope. Do we have any comments from the floor? Seen none, any council comments? Quiet group. Couple of updates from the last two weeks. Mr. Hoynes and I had, as he mentioned, on Monday, had an introductory meeting with the new firefighters and met with them and had a lot of good discussion. Also attended the Vietnam War 50th anniversary at the American Legion. Mr. Hoynes and I also met with the Downtown Business Association on some future planning ideas. Also attended the Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation's board meeting. Probably no major updates. Did you get, I don't know if that got sent to you guys, Toby's update. I'll make sure that gets out, or that he comes to one of the next council meetings and gives an update. Also, myself, a large number of council members and staff members attended a ribbon-cutting for the Twisted Vine downtown. Also, went to a meeting and met the new CEO for Allegiant Creighton Hospital. Midlands is an important part of the community, so want to make sure we're building a good relationship there. Ms. Myers and I also met with our representatives from Colliers, who has the listing agreement on the Technology Park, to understand what they've been doing and talk about plans there for building that out. And then, a lot of the council and staff members and myself also attended the press conference this morning for the fire department merger. We've also, a couple of updates, two ribbon-cuttings, make sure you got on the calendars, Thursday, April 3rd, Farmers Insurance has opened a new office at 4:00 PM. And then, Friday, April 11th, the Downtown Business Association, the Bell Place Shops in Old Bell Hall, is having a ribbon-cutting. Also, the Wellness Committee kicked off the fitness. Mr. Hoynes gave an update at the last council meeting about the Fitbits and how many employees are participating in that. And there was a group of employees led by Mr. Hoynes that walked 26.2 miles today. They personally delivered the Fitbits to every building in the city. And just today, the group that is enrolled in that fitness walked 562 miles as a group, just today. We've got about 100 employees in that group, so it's an average of about 5.6 miles. Now, it's a little skewed by a few people who did the 26 miles, but it's a pretty big deal. We also, I think I'd given the update, we started the Second Leadership Academy, met now, I believe, twice, and we've got a couple of them here. You guys want to stand up at the podium and introduce yourselves? Maybe mention who you are, which department it is, and maybe how long you've been with us.
Rocky Lemming, parks, five years, part-time, three years, full-time.
Gabe Godsey, Public Works, worked for Marty, going on five years.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Do you have a comment?
[inaudible]
I was just waiting, after a group like that walking 26 miles, I'm waiting for some workmen's comp claims to come in. Well, there's going to be a lot of people hurting tomorrow. I believe that's all the updates and all the major comments. Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Nays by councilmembers Jaworski, Klug, Stube, and Ingberg.
So, the motion fails, so we stay here?
We have to stay. We do.
Got a motion to reconsider? Motion to reconsider by Councilwoman Klug. Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Now you can vote on the original motion to adjourn.